Thank you. Good morning. We're going to call this meeting to order, work session, October 6th. What we're here to do, and by the end of this work session, the expectation is that we'll have a general agreement on comments and recommendations on the surveys. Just briefly, House Bill 452 requires each local Board of Education to review and consider the results of the department's surveys, make comments and recommendations related to the results of the department's survey to the State Board on or before November 30th, 2015. That's the first step. Second, a commission has been appointed by the Governor and will be moving forward to take all of the survey information and develop their own recommendations. And again, this Board will be asked to make comments and recommendations on those commission reports by September 1st of 2016. So with that in mind, I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Wilcox.
Thank you very much. Board members, today what we're going to do is kind of outline the assessments that we give as a district and provide the rationale for why we give them. I would tell you, the great majority of the assessments that we offer in this district are to inform instruction. We don't give a lot of assessments that are just a pure summative, kind of end-of-course, end-of-activity assessment. We try to give assessments that actually help us get better as we go forward with kids. So I think you'll hear some of that. Most of the administration of these assessments have come over a number of years. Dr. Pugh will give you some historical perspective as well. And it is our hope that you'll ask a lot of questions about why we do what we do and how we chose what we chose. And then what we will do is help the Board to prepare your response to the legislation. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Pugh, who will introduce her team, because many of you may not know all of the folks sitting at the table with her and what their new roles are in the district. Dr. Pugh?
Thank you. Good morning. With me, I have everybody who is involved in testing pre-K through 12, so they should be able to answer your questions that you might have. I have Maureen Margovich, who is our testing supervisor. I have Stacy Henson, who is our early learning coordinator. I have Laura Hanks, who is our English Language Arts and Social Studies supervisor, and Dr. April Bishop, who is our math and science supervisor. And it's important to note that the results that were requested in this review were all completed prior to most of this team being hired. So there have been changes even since that initial gathering of information. So if I could orient you to the handouts and the things that you received in your packets, you should have the total report, the 365 pages. If you don't have it, we have extra copies here if you'd like to reference it. You also should have a copy of the PowerPoint that will walk us through today, as well as Washington County's final report that has specific to Washington County, the assessments that we give. You also should have -- yes?
Does anyone need any of that additional information?
We have extra copies of all of it, if you'd like it.
I have mine here.
Okay.
One more. We're good.
Very good.
Thank you.
And we also have a chart that we put together that's a working draft of the number of minutes spent in testing per grade for students. We have copies of that as well. In June, as I stated before, MSDE visited Washington County Public Schools to gather information about the assessments that we required. And they were very clear that they were looking for assessments that all students were required to take. So they weren't interested in those assessments that we give that are tied to a particular course that are not mandated for all students. For example, our AP and IB and our career industry certifications. So those assessments are not in here because they don't impact all students. In the full report, there's a section that Maryland included that includes all of the required assessments for the state of Maryland, which would include the NAPE assessments, the access assessment for ELL, the kindergarten readiness, PARK for all grade levels, MSA Science, the alternative MSA Science for students in our Life Skills Program, as well as their new national assessment for alternative education programs, and the high school assessments. So those are assessments that we give that are part of that whole picture of Washington County. In the section that you reviewed for Washington County, we had a list of those assessments. It included the scholastic reading inventory, the measure of academic progress, the MAP assessments. We included number corners and the pre-K assessments, as well as our math benchmarks, the OLSAT, which is our screening for cognitive abilities, the PSAT, which we offer to all students in 10th and 11th grade, and this year, 9th grade as well, Math Facts, and Fuentes and Pennell. So that's the bulk of the assessments we offer here in Washington County. It's important to note that there have been changes to that even, you know, as soon as the new team came onboard, because we're engaging in work right now to create formative assessments that are aligned to the standards, that will tie all of our instruction together, but that will be used instructionally rather than as a reporting mechanism for us countywide. So as President Breitman stated, the House Bill 452, the purpose was to improve the process of assessments for administering and using the data from assessments. The survey of all systems was completed, and that's what you've reviewed. And again, that is what districts used last year. There's also important to note that, as Dr. Wilcox stated, about 45% of the tests that we administer are state mandated assessments. Again, 25% of those are local mandated assessments, and another 30% are those that are limited in scope, that only certain students take them based upon their program of study. The most heavily tested grade that we have is in 5th grade. And according to the chart that you have, they spend 1.4% of their time actually sitting for the tests. And we were trying to make comparative data for you so that we could compare that to something, so you could see what it would look like. And it was really challenging, because there's not much that a student does in their day for that little amount of time. Over time, students spend more time in line for lunch than they do for sitting for required There's also a very complex pathway that Maureen's office gets to put together in terms of what students have met in their assessing, in their tests, in order to meet graduation requirements. So that's another purpose of those required assessments, is to help us make sure that our students are graduating career and college-ready. So as President Breitman shared, this is the first part of the timeline for House Bill 452. Currently, you're reviewing the survey and making comments and recommendations. The State Board will do the same, and then the State Board will send that to the General Assembly. The commission's review will be centered around six, I believe, six basic questions that include how much time is spent testing in each grade. It'll include whether or not some tests are duplicative or unnecessary. And there's work being done around this already. In that the kindergarten readiness assessment, there was a webinar yesterday through the state, and they were looking at what we offer, what districts offer in addition to the kindergarten readiness assessment, and what might be duplicating. And then the third question is, the state interested in requiring some assessments and attempting to develop a statewide approach for administering them? The commission is going to review whether or not schedules for administering assessments allot enough time between test administration and receipt of the data to meaningfully inform instruction. This year, because PARK is a new test, obviously, we haven't gotten our results back from that yet. Soon, it's hoped that it's for approximately four weeks after giving the assessment that we would have the data back. So for PARK, we should have the data back in the summer in time to make adjustments. The next question, do testing windows have negative ancillary effects on instruction, materials, equipment use, and a school's calendar? And in looking at that, we, I've talked to several schools about it. We had a MAP window this month for the measures of assessment progress. And Morgansville Elementary School was able to complete that assessment for all of their students in four days this year, as compared to last year where it was a month-long window. They've actually recently received technology that's enabled them to give those assessments in a very much shorter window, less impact on the schedule. North Hagerstown High School, last year, I was looking at tests that a whole grade takes. For the 10th grade, even though there's a window that's fairly large, the 10th grade students actually, we scheduled labs and computer areas for six days to complete that testing, but each student actually only sat for the number of minutes required for the test. So the student wasn't testing for six days. And we'd like to reduce that window. The tests themselves require a day and two days to administer to a student for one test. And then the final question, no, it's not the final. What are the implications for the state if changes were made to allow more flexibility in administering assessments? Again, the commission's recommendations are going to center around how can local school systems and the state improve the process in which assessments are administered and used for instruction? In Washington County, we are beginning to use SchoolCity, which is an assessment platform where items that are aligned to the state's standards are housed, and teachers can create assessments from those in a formative way for them to use to adjust instruction. The next piece, next question is, if administering assessment results reduces instructional time, what's the most efficient way to make sure that you have time to both administer the assessments and to continue with instruction? We are trying to get data back immediately to students. In previous years, we had benchmarks where students did a bubble sheet, and the bubble sheet was sent back here, and we scanned those bubble sheets, and then, you know, two weeks later, we got them the results. And with SchoolCity, Maureen's office is able to turn around those. They don't even come through Maureen's office. They're right-housed on the teacher's computer so that they have the data immediately for themselves. And they're not double-bubbling things so that they have a grade for themselves. And then finally, they're going, the commission is going to look at which developmentally appropriate elements, if any, should be included in kindergarten assessments. So our outcomes today, review and discuss the results, make comments and recommendations, and submit those, and make those comments and recommendations public. The future of the work here is that the timeline continues. Once all the local boards have had the opportunity to comment, and State Board has opportunity to comment, the commission will report back to both of those entities, as well as the General Assembly. And then each local board around September of next year will make a comment on whether or not you accept or reject what the commission's recommendations are in terms of assessing. That will go to the State Board, and the State Board then will submit the final compilation to the Governor and to the General Assembly next October. In closing, I would say that we, this department, believes that local assessments are critical in monitoring individual students' progress towards mastering standards. We also want to be sensitive to the students and what schools and students experience. And we're continually working to improve that process to make sure that the data that are gathered are good data and that they're useful to teachers to adjust instruction. The state is also using their assessments to mirror that process, to monitor county and school progress towards the goal of meeting state standards through the curriculum, but also to ensure students who graduate are truly prepared for college and career. They've been responsive to feedback. Feedback last year with the PARK assessment was that it was too long, too many administrations. We had a mid-year or 75% of the way through the year, and then a summative. And this year, they've condensed that, so it's one administration. So there aren't two separate administrations at the end, and that substantially reduced the amount of time students would be testing by about 90 minutes per test. Additionally, the kindergarten readiness assessment, there was feedback through the early learning coordinators that that was a lengthy assessment, and they've reduced the time required for that assessment about 20%. We also have some schools that are staying within the window but being creative about how to use that assessment, breaking it apart, possibly to do some of it during the screening, concepts of print, what a student knows about how to read, so that we have that information and it's not one lengthy window for the kindergarten. We also had the opportunity this year to participate in additional assessments offered through the state. PARK now has an English 9 and a government or a geometry assessment. But at the same time, they also required for determining graduation readiness or college and career determination, two assessments, the English 11 and the Algebra II, which those we have to do and we are doing so that we have our data about how well-prepared our students are. And at this time, we opted not to participate in the English 9 and the geometry. We may rethink that in the future as we become more aligned, but this year, knowing that that's a one window and to add four more tests in that window would be difficult for schools. So with that, we are here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Just to help move the conversation forward, we do have an hour. We're down to 45 minutes at this time. This is the first step. This is our first opportunity. So I think it would be helpful if we focused our questions and recommendations around what the commission will be reviewing, which is what is listed in the PowerPoint. I will share with you that there is one Board of Ed member from the state serving on the commission, and that's an individual who is a recent Hogan appointment to Anne Arundel County. So we do have one board member on the commission. So with that, if we want to try to focus the conversation, if we turn to the page where the top says the commission's review, how much time is spent testing in each grade, we can just go down that list. Obviously, any questions are welcomed. And I'll just open the discussion to the floor. Ms. Williams?
Sure.
Thank you.
Looking at the chart, estimated testing time for required tests per grade, and looking at the last three columns, and then looking at the asterisk item, total testing does not include breaks, directions, and collection. So to me, the amount of time a student is involved in assessment and sitting for an assessment would indeed involve the time they're sitting for the directions, for the collection of materials. And so I'm wondering if this was something that was directed by the state for all locals to compute the information this way? Was this a local decision? How did that play out?
It was a local decision for us to look at it by grade level. The asterisks were so that we could use exact times. So we looked at the times per test and just used their total number of minutes. But we wanted people to understand that, yes, there is time that's required to distribute and get them to the rooms. Maureen, do you have anything to add?
As we move more towards online testing, that time gets reduced because collection requires less. It's basically one piece of paper that is collected. So we try to be efficient about the amount of time. Also, depending on which assessment it is, for HSA, it does have breaks built into it, whereas PARK, because it's longer test sessions, they may go to lunch in between, so there wouldn't be a break necessarily. So that's one of the reasons also where we kind of decided that it's very hard to quantify that, depending on the type of test and which test it is.
Well, may I continue? In thinking about this, when we're looking at the balance of instructional time and assessment time, I don't really think that this gives a true indication as to how much time is being spent on non-instruction. Understanding the relationship between assessment and instruction, I really don't know that this gives us a true picture of the amount of time our students are engaged in what we're calling assessment.
How would you like to see that presented?
Well, I don't know if it would be possible to talk with teachers or to look at the test manuals, to look at the recommended amount of time to devote to the giving of directions, to talk with teachers to find out how much time is spent in the actual distribution of materials, collection of materials.
I understand what you're saying. I think that for the, I'll just use my North High English 10 example. The testing sessions are divided up into the number of minutes the students have to actually have to work on the material. And then we add time a little bit on either side so that they have time to get into the room, everybody can log on. It's not as much handing out the paperwork, and there really aren't as many directions as what there used to be with assessments, because the students have a lot of the direction right there in front of them. So it's a matter of getting them started. So you're asking for, what do you actually schedule in the schedule? And it would vary between schools, but we could give you some examples. So for a test that's going to take 90 minutes of students sitting in there, we might allocate, you know, depending on where it fell in the day, we might allocate a two-hour time period.
That's what I'm thinking about, Dr. Pugh, that a teacher in creating her schedule for the day would have to allocate a block of time. And realizing that the tests have a designated time period, whether it's a 60-minute test or a 90-minute test, that would be a part of that block. But then how much additional time would that teacher set aside for? Right?
Okay.
Do you have anything to add? I think it's also important to understand that sometimes when they're designing the assessments, for example, PARK, as opposed to HSA, for PARK, when the students are all done with a session, the session ends. So they're allowed up to 90 minutes, but they may only use 60 minutes because the students are able to complete the assessment more quickly. So again, we may set aside two hours for them to be assessed, but they may only require 90 minutes or 75 minutes. So I think when we were producing this, we were saying, okay, hard and fast, because sometimes it's less than the window that we're looking at.
But the fast finishers, then, are still not receiving instruction from the teacher who is administering the test to the remainder of students, correct? Okay.
Can I ask for clarification, Ms. Williams?
Sure.
Since we're looking at feedback to the commission, who's going to be seeing results from 24 county school districts, is there an assumption that this format is a similar format throughout the state? Are they, are other counties looking at a block of time that is hard and fast or includes non-instructional, just so the commission is comparing similar data? And I don't know that. I was looking at the Washington County information that went on the survey, so I was just curious how the two might align.
Right. They did not ask for this at all.
Okay.
And so it won't be the same coming from all ELEAs.
Superintendent's had a conversation the other day, and that's one of the challenges they see in it, is that 24 local jurisdictions, there's a high likelihood that some will share the same formatting, but not all will. It's my understanding also that MSCEA is doing a survey of its teachers that it intends to produce as kind of a counterpoint to whatever the state offers to the State Board of Education. At least that was what, I believe, the Talbot Superintendent indicated. So.
So what they have that's in common is that how long a student has to complete. So if they stay focused on the information they gathered through the assessment, how long the student actually has to complete, you can use those minutes to...
Which is part of the rationale between why we chose the way we did in our conversations with the leadership team, was just the testing period. Because quite honestly, it may take one teacher longer to walk around the classroom and hand out materials. It may take somebody else longer to assign passwords or to get kids online and engaged than another teacher, even within the same grade-level configuration at a school, let alone across the state. So it's probably best to stick with times that you know are solid. I think one of the items that we will also indicate to the state is, in the absence of adequate technology resources for some of the online assessments, one of the things that Dr. Pugh, I think, foreshadowed was, if you book the computer lab for six days, that means that other kids in the school can't use that laboratory or the technology because it's tied up for testing. So if you're a teacher who's made the technology a central part to your classroom, it's going to be difficult for you to continue with that continuity of instruction, which is why at some point later on, Dr. Pugh will ask us to consider accelerating a portion of our plan so that we can step forward with the PARK administration in a narrower window.
Floor remains open. Questions, comments? Mr. Gessford? Ms. Fisher?
I was going to ask something similar to what Dr. Wilcox just brought up. I mean, it makes sense to me that the technology is one of the rate-limiting, as a scientist, a rate-limiting step for what you're able to do. So what are the limitations, both in terms of individual devices, in terms of infrastructure, bandwidth, that limit your ability as the instructional leader to deliver these assessments in as efficient and responsive a way as possible?
I appreciate that question. I would like to see us get closer to the time limits that they give for exactly how long a student has to be in an assessment time period. So for example, if I'm a 10th grade student and I am supposed to test for a 90-minute period, I would like to be able to take all 10th grade students and assess them during that 90-minute period, so that we're not scheduling in larger windows that become more complicated for schools. So the technology limitations are, and that we're analyzing currently, exactly how many devices do we have that are available for students to use during an assessment period? And do they have all of the ancillaries, headphones, mice, because some students aren't used to using the trackballs? And are we using those in instruction? Are our students comfortable with the technology so that they're not getting into a situation where they're testing using something they don't have regular use of in the classroom? And bandwidth, you know, we have increased greatly. And bandwidth, you know, we have increased greatly, the network access. So the wireless has improved substantially over the past year. Are we still working on that? Absolutely. We try it out and test it out when we have large groups. One example was at our opening pre-services. So everybody was on, and we were using the devices, and so we were able to see how far we were maxing out our infrastructure. And currently, I think yesterday we spoke in leadership that students are using the bandwidth. You can see where they're hitting it with their own devices as opposed to what we have in the school. So it will be a growing problem, but one that we're analyzing carefully to decide where is the gap between what we actually have and what we actually need in order to have a very efficient testing window that's least disruptive to the school environment. And we should have those numbers coming forward to you.
I think, Dr. Harding, that our goal is to sometime in early December, if not late November, tell you specifically what we need for the testing window, and then ask the board to consider applying some of the money that's been earmarked for technology to accelerate the pace of the acquisition of those devices so that we can move into the testing window and narrow that window as we talked about. I think, Dr. Pugh, you said you should have those results back in November or early December at the latest, and we'll bring them to the board shortly thereafter.
Yes, and we're doing a two-level inventory. So we're doing it by, during a window of time, having the schools turn on every device and log in so that we capture exactly what kind of device it is. At the same time, we're also asking for a more manual count of actual student devices, because when we have that larger, how many devices do you have? It may be picking up the teacher's computer, picking up the two computers in the back of the room that aren't necessarily available to combine for a mobile testing environment.
And are we approaching this question with the end state in mind? Because what you're describing sounds a lot like, okay, we're gonna see where we are now, what do we need? What do we have now? How much bandwidth? I mean, are we looking at, here is what I would like, the end state of technology? And there is no end state, because technology is evolving, I get all that. But again, here is the experience I want kids to have, here is the capabilities I want the instructional staff to have, and here is how they're all gonna interact together. How do we back map from where we are today to get there?
The direct answer is yes. And the technology team is meeting in a parallel fashion to the inventory process. We will not recommend to the board something that won't fit later into the technology plan or into the larger kind of goal that we have as a system.
Right, because to me, it seems, and maybe this is an editorial comment, but to me, it seems the drive for this has to come from your office. Because to me, all the other support people back there are supporting what you do and what Dr. Wilcox does at the board's direction, right? I mean, IT is there to support instruction, HR is there to support instruction, legal's there to support instruction, facilities are there to support instruction. And it seems to me, if you're the driver for it, that should have more impact on all the support staff than really anything we say, or, you know, because you're the one responsible for it.
Well, and I do feel that support, they've said, tell us what you need. And so what we're trying to do is be really thoughtful and include the teachers in that review of the what we need. We have a really exciting group of teachers who's been meeting routinely to look at the things that they're requiring for instruction, to take it to that next level, to talk about how you augment instruction rather than just supplement with technology to do the things that we've always done. So it's a pretty exciting group. I expect a great recommendation to come in. At the same time, our recommendation comes in with just strictly numbers to meet a need. So we'll have the numbers, and we'll have the types of things that teachers are saying we want. Putting those together, then we can smartly begin to purchase to get to where we need to be.
Great. And if I heard you correctly, that you're working on that now, and you'll bring a recommendation to the board sometime in late November, early December, that'll be based on technology, not only instruction, but, or not only testing, but instruction more broadly.
Absolutely, and the feedback that we had from the board during the last process.
Great. I have another question, but I'll let people, somebody else go.
Mr. Reddinger?
Question somewhat, and I looked through this, and I can see it doesn't appear to be a lot of testing time, but there are some issues that are deceptive, you know. Not all of this is problematic for them, because some of them have, their impact is doubled or tripled, you know. And, you know, then you're tripling the amount of time that they're losing with their students. No, comes across as not being a lot for the classroom teacher who's losing, you know, 10 hours of instruction. To them, it does come across as a lot. Contact with them all the time. Can't be deceptive. I'm still not a big fan of Park, only because I don't... Technology is important, not only getting enhanced, but also... I would not want to take up enough every year for them to take tests on a much quicker, much more comfortable...
Tactile.
But it's not the way it can be.
Be. So if you're, you know, when you're putting a time limit, some kids, that's not a problem at all. You know, they can do it very quickly, you know. I'm like this, they're like this. And others, and I think you tire out if you're fighting your device as well as a very difficult exam. So I think, you know, that, Lord, is there any way we can start teaching our kids, you know, to legitimately use a keyboard instead of just self-taught keyboarding? Really, I mean, that sounds simple, but it's, you know, it's, yeah, it is. If you can't, if you have trouble using that, or using the mouse, or whatever the case might be, it's gonna impact the score as well as the frustration level of the individual taking the exam. So we still have some problems to deal with. I am interested in the numbers. I think the numbers are accurate. Even if you, if you double it for prep time and everything else, you're still talking about 1%, 1.5%. That's not a lot of time. But cumulative, it can be a problem for some teachers in some classrooms and some students. So that's just mine.
The impact on the students is less if they're the only one in the grade and they're taking the test. But like you said, teachers who have multiple grades, it impacts the teacher's instruction more. And also, one of the things, one of the reasons that we'd really like to get technology in students' hands to enhance their learning, is that it has the ability to meet individual student needs faster than a teacher would. They can change the settings for sound, they can have a reader, they can have the ability to enlarge fonts. And getting them used to that and having that control, I think it was very eye-opening to me the first time we took the Park, and you could see some of the accessibility features where students have a highlighter. Well, if you've never highlighted with a, you know, on a computer, that's very challenging. But I think that once we have students who are used to using that in their daily instruction, it will be great for them, both instructionally and hopefully at the outcome when they test.
Thank you, by the way.
Mrs. Williams? Just a question. Looking at the information for Washington County Public Schools with regard to the types of assessments that we give, I don't see anything listed for foundations or for writing in the elementary school. Do we do any assessment involved in those programs? I see number corners as an elementary program, but those two?
Foundations isn't a program intended for whole groups of students. It's more for targeted groups of students. And there are assessments, the same thing with Wilson, there are assessments that are built in so that when the students master certain concepts, that gives the teacher an indication to move on. But because they're not for everybody, then, yeah, we didn't record them.
Thank you. Additional questions? Just looking again at what the commission's going to be reviewing, I don't know if we've, I think we've touched on the time spent, the state interest in a statewide approach. Do you have, Dr. Pugh or Dr. Wilcox, any clue as to what that might look like? That third one, the last one there?
Well, I think there are some proponents. I think we're going to have a government exam, right?
Yes.
That will be statewide. I think that's coming up. So at the same time, the state is saying let's lessen the testing burden, they're adding tests to our plate. The new science exams will probably take more time as well. So I think there is an interest in this, at the Department of Education, to add more statewide assessments to the plate. I think part of this exercise is they would like to have some of the local districts sweep away some of their end-of-course assessments so that they can assess on a broader scale. But again, I've not heard that directly from anyone there.
Mrs. Williams?
Another question, just, I was struck by just differences from LEA to LEA. And I was just wondering if your staff had the opportunity to look and discuss in terms of what some of the other counties are doing and...
Yes, we've taken, I was, I needed to see it, so I put it in a graph and a grid formula so that we could list all of the types of assessments by content and by county to see, you know, what other counties were using. And really, what I felt after doing that was, I felt like we were ahead of some other counties, because we previously gave benchmark assessments in almost every course all throughout. It was a very lengthy process. And I'm not sure it did what we needed it to do in terms of teachers using that information. It became much more of a thought of accountability rather than using it to help kids. And so a number of years ago, they stopped the mandatory benchmarks. And April has given her folks that go-ahead, too, even with the math ones that are listed there, is, you know, these are for you. These are for you to use to monitor the progress of your students. But I think we're moving much more towards a formative assessment system, where it's in the hands of the teachers to learn and know the items and to be able to quickly turn that around. It's also built into the cornerstone tasks and things that we're moving towards. So I felt kind of good where we stood relative to other counties. I spoke to some of the other associate superintendents at our meeting, and many of them are still doing all of those, moving towards formative, but also still requiring the benchmark, which is their district-level monitoring piece. So that was my aha, is that we're using different things to get the same results. In some cases, that other people are using more expensive things than what we're using, but they're all looking for data around English and math. And some of the other counties also had the phys ed assessments. I thought that was interesting. We do some of those assessments, but it's not everybody, every grade, so.
Thank you.
And I don't know if you had any other additions?
When you look at the list you compiled, you can certainly see some duplicity, because we all call the assessments different names. So in some, they use the word benchmark, and some they use transfer tasks, some of the counties use midterms and finals. So it's a little difficult when you look. It's better to actually have a conversation with the supervisor from that district, because some of the names, I think there's actually more overlap than even what it looks like.
While at the MABE conference last week, the interim state superintendent, Jack Smith, gave a presentation, he mentioned, and I'm not sure if it's reflective of his philosophy or a broader philosophy at the state level, talking about trying to do less, what he called event testing, which is, I think what we're talking about here is blocks of time versus immediate recall or retrieval practice, which I think is more of a formative type. Do we see that movement away from a lot of these event testing? Do we see, and where is that conversation coming from?
I think we've moved away from it. I don't think the state's moved yet. I think they're looking for ways to do that, and yet still have the accountability pieces that they are required to have. So having these quick data back to the teacher, that's going to have more impact on students if we can help teachers know and understand what they're looking at and have resources to use that data to inform what they're doing for their individual students than anything that would happen at a district level. I think we look at the data, and we like to look at the data to see where can we offer some of the larger PD, professional development opportunities that would impact more schools, more people are interested in that. So I do feel like we've come a long way in that. We're still developing our assessments, we're still trying them out. We've gotten feedback from the elementary group on the diagnostic assessments, and the conversations are rich. The conversations are about the standards and about, well, okay, what do we do next? And there's a freedom of choice to be able to respond to that, whereas before, with a really rigid scope and sequence, they didn't feel that ability to go back and really meet the needs of the students. So I'm excited about where we're headed.
The only thing I would add is, I think you're always gonna have a blend of summative and formative assessments. I think, you know, it's important to guide instruction through the formative assessment process. Those are the tests that individual teachers give, but also some of the more technologically advanced tests. But I think there is some value still in formative assessments, in summative assessments, in the sense that it requires a level of rigor and recall and perhaps application that some of the shorter-term tests don't. So as a system, we won't move completely away from both types of testing, because I think we see an inherent value in both. But I think the preponderance, the great majority of our tests, will be formative and help teachers to teach those kids in their classrooms, not only on a small group or large group basis, but on an individual basis.
Because I do believe the ESEA has, on both sides, they, of course, are in limbo now. They haven't gone to their conference work, but they've been talking about allowing the accountability piece to revert back to the state level. So I was just wondering if maybe Dr. Smith was projecting a direction if and when ESEA decides, Congress decides to do that work on that one. Dr. Harding, I know you had some additional...
Yes, you sort of got to what my second question was, and it was Dr. Smith at the MABE conference and his discussion of assessments. And one of the things that he said that really resonated with me was, we often, as leaders in education, talk about the value to us of doing an assessment, what it is that I learn about what the student knows, what does it tell me about what, how good the school is or the district, et cetera. And one of the things he talked about was that we often forget about the value of the assessment as an instructional tool for the student, because an assessment, particularly some of the formative assessments, that's really written well, the student will go through the process, A, of studying for it, and this is more for, I guess, middle, high school than it is elementary school. But then when they take the assessment, if it's written well, it forces them to think more about the things that they've learned in new ways, so that they actually learn from the process of taking the test itself. And one of the things he said a few times was, a student learns, can read the same material three or four times, and they'll gain a certain amount of learning each time. But if you then assess them on it, they will learn more from the assessment than they will from just reading it again. That resonated with me, because I think that was my experience, particularly in math and science, with some of the really good teachers that I had. You sort of went into that test, knowing that it was a challenge between you and the teacher, and what is she gonna throw at me, and how am I gonna be able to show her that I can figure it out? And it also bears some, a different way of thinking then about the assessment survey, because if we're only thinking about assessments as time that kids are not spending learning, I think that's not true.
I would agree.
And I hope that that's kind of the approach that we try to take, especially, as you said, you're developing some of these assessments now. And I'm not gonna, I'm not saying that the tests are good, I'm not saying they're bad, but I think there is a mix that we have to be conscious of, that A, it helps inform instruction, but B, it helps provide instruction for the student. So any thoughts on...
You actually just defined very nicely and succinctly what a cornerstone task You actually just defined very nicely and succinctly what a cornerstone task is. And it's a challenge that the instructors put together that says that if you've learned everything that you should have learned in this course, you should be able to do this task. Even though you've never seen it before, you should be able to use your learning to really master this. And it helps the students see what we're looking for. You know, when you would prepare for a test in school, if it was a multiple-choice test, and you went through, you could tell the relative rigor wasn't there, you spent less time prepping. You spent less time really studying what it was they wanted. But if you knew each time you were going to be assessed in a larger way, and we would again say, these are not life-altering events. They're not intended to be life-altering events. They're intended to help the students learn as well as the teachers. So, I appreciate that.
I have that conversation with my kids regularly, because they'll come home after taking, say, a math test, and say, there were problems on there that weren't like the ones we did in class. And they start thinking, well, that's unfair. But once you explain to them that, let me see the problem, and you show them how the same principles they learned and the problems they did in class, they could use to solve that problem, then they sort of get it. And it forces them to stretch and to learn, and that's what I always thought a good assessment was.
Well, and that is the purpose of what we're doing, so that they can walk away and truly have skills that they can use anywhere, at any time, and that they have base knowledge that they can pull from to solve problems that they haven't seen before. And I think previously, it was, here are the problems, here are some examples. Now, work through some problems that look exactly the same. And we taught them in isolated chunks. And you don't see that in the real world or in a career. You see it in a variety of conceptual math pieces, that you have to be able to draw what you know from each place and put together. So, yes, that's very much what we're, it's a different way of preparing students for where they're ultimately headed, to be able to use the information they know.
Great.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. And if I could just add to that, what that leads me to is this concept of high-stakes testing, which seems to be what we got stuck in these event testings, whether it was teacher evaluation or student graduation. And then, the thought that, how do we encourage a student to take risk and do the work that Dr. Harding was talking about in applying what they've taught to a new experience, even if that meant they didn't get the A, or the B, or the five, or whatever the rank is? How do we move from that high stakes to that take a risk and let's really have some creative, energized learning going on? That seems to be the rub that gets at least this board member.
Well, I think for us, that is, we've tried to be very sensitive. In that first administration in the elementary cornerstone tasks, we didn't gather district results. We asked schools to reflect on it. We asked schools to plan using that data. I think we can do a lot by not making it high stakes, by not putting the comparative data up. Here's how you did at this school, and here's how you did at that school, but rather using that data to really match strengths. So, we have schools that perform really well, and we have schools that don't. We can match their resources and connect them to say, here's a conversation about what they did to help their students prepare. And so, once you take that ranking system away, that competition piece, I'm hopeful it helps. The people, the students who I find have the most difficulty in accepting that are your highest-performing students, because for a very long time, they've been right, and they want to be right. So, that unknown between, you know, on a high-stakes exam, they put that pressure on themselves to be high stakes, and they want there to be a right answer. They want the reward.
Well, and
Right.
As much as we talk about being innovative and creative, the real world still is a meritocracy. And so, these young people can't afford to experiment away and think they're going to go on to a prestigious college or university. So, we have to honor and respect that as well. And it's a difficult balance for Peg and her team to, you know, move to kind of a free-form, experimental curriculum, if you will, and having a balance with a lot of kids that want to go on to places beyond Washington County. And those institutions haven't changed in terms of their acceptance standards. I mean, I'm going to tell you, you are not going to go to an Ivy or a top 100 school without an SAT score today, with very few exceptions, that is, you know, 1,900 to beyond that. I mean, you're just not. Now, are there some schools that are throwing away entrance requirements? Yes, there are. But those are far and few between. So, I think we've got to find the balance, and I think that's what this team is working hard to do. So.
Okay, we have about seven minutes remaining. If there are any other questions, I can wrap up the work session. I think at this point, I've taken several notes as to issues that board members brought forward. I know that Dr. Pugh and her team have taken notes. And with everyone's permission, we'll put a draft response together based on the conversations here today. And put that together, and then have that ready to send into the state by the deadline.
Will we have an opportunity to review that?
Absolutely.
And will that be in another work session, or is that going to be?
I think we can
An action item?
We can bring that forward as an action item. Dr. Harding, you started to?
I had the same question as Mrs. Williams.
Okay. Was the answer satisfactory? Does that help bring that forward?
I lost track of something. Who's writing this letter?
I thought it was the collaborative effort based on some notes I've taken and Dr. Pugh, and we would
So, the board will generate the initial, and then we will add to it? Or do you want us to frame the letter and let you? I think we just have to know that. We would
You want to flip a coin, Dr. Pugh?
This is the board's response. We've had our chance to respond, and we have.
Exactly.
So, why don't you guys?
Why don't I come up with a draft and send it to you?
And I'll add notes that I have.
Perfect.
Thank you. I have some as well, Peg.
Great. All right, we are adjourned. There is an agenda meeting, and then we'll meet in closed session at 10:30. Thank you.
Thank you, team.